All right, it is 6:30 on this about to be rainy Tuesday, September 23rd. Motion to accept the agenda.
No move.
By our town officials and say if we all in favor.
Aye.
The town of Janus, the select board is committed providing environment and respect during our meetings. We ask members to interact with plain manner even when there's disagreement about participation in our community. We want all participants to emerge in our memberized communities with a welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and everyone who participates to maintain the standards to support and respect our community. And with that, we have the walk-ins and no walk-ins, not subliminal. None of you know. We will go to the brief report of the town minister.
Should the highlights, Commissioner on Disabilities, that's disability man?
There you go.
Saturday, October 18th from 10:00 to 1:00, Citro High School Gymnasium. For residents, caregivers, friends and families, this is organized by the Citro, Kenyon and Noah, Commissioner on Disabilities. ACK, the contract for the Ocean Side Sewall Project will be working extended hours today till approximately 10:00. This work will be quite, file testing needs to be done outside below tide this evening. Kevin and Sean actually asked to go early, should they not keep on testing. Work is already done on 91 Surfside and we are on Seaside Road making repairs to the sewalls. Fall flushing this week is to be on New Driftway to First Parish on the side streets. Please check your water before doing laundry. Store improvement project, the lining of the pipes, Anthony Road, Blanchard Road, Tilney Road, Hughes Road, Hazel Lap and Lane this week. Finally, the town is going to be conducting fire pump flow testing Monday, September 29th. Both the library and the public safety complex. This may cause groundwater surrounding areas, so again, please check this because I'm handing in tests annually on local. So I'll give you, like everything else we posted.
Thank you. Questions? Janus.
No.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, as you mentioned, we're gonna, we are gonna do the, the boards and committee interviews, but then we're gonna jump to DPW because they have to go check on those filings. After that, so we're rather just. To the board and committee interviews first, so do I have Sarah Lannan, I think.
Yes, thank you.
Come on up and I think I saw David Stevens.
Yeah, we just lost him.
But we just lost him, but that's okay.
Hi.
Try for, yeah, one up.
Hi.
So kind of ask some of the same questions for folks, just kind of.
Sure.
Why, why now? Yes, sit down.
So my name is Sarah Lannan and in 2007, I started working for the Citro Recreation Department, teaching classes. And I have been teaching cycling every Monday and Wednesday night pretty much since 2007 and many other classes. I did exercise, well, two classes on Sunday mornings that sell out. I don't know if I see anyone here in those classes, but I teach Thursday mornings. I taught the preschool playtime probably in 2009, 2010. I am the director of the Nod of the Mile program with 45 kids this summer. I do the fun through Fridays in February, March at 8:00. So you never know what one, over 100 middle schoolers running towards you on a Friday afternoon after school is like. I can do it. But anyways, I've done all ages, I've taught fifth grade, third grade for 20 years. I taught at the early preschool. I am also currently teaching at the Senior Center workout classes in the capacity center. So from preschool to seniors, I've done a lot, a lot of work. I'm a people person. I love what I do and the director approached me this summer and asked if I would be on the committee and thought I would be a great fit. So he asked me to come to town hall and fill out the paperwork and I thought that would be, that's all I had to do. And when I found out I had to come here, I was like, oh, now this is great, thank you. But anyways, I've worked for the, I've done a lot of classes and a lot of programs and I love it and here I am.
You know, it's kind of get involved in a different.
Maybe help out with my experience and all the things I've done. So that's why I'm here. So if I can help, I'll help.
Let's see if there's any, any questions for me.
I'll just say that I've known Sarah for a long time. She's a ball of human energy and I can't wait to have her to see me on the pitch.
I'm fine. I've been impressed with the energy even here.
Thanks.
It's really great.
You're joining, you signed up for the, for the cycling.
Yeah.
Yes.
I made it to do that, yes.
I was, tomorrow night, 6:15.
Oh, 6:15, all right.
Yeah, answered all my questions with your background.
Any sir, great for the position.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We'll be going later on. That's incredible. Hey, this is great. So thank you so much. Really appreciate you stepping forward. Uh, Dave, David's here. David here? Come on up. How are you? Come on down. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Just, yeah. You're just state your name and your address. Really, we're just kind of, here's the one basic question, kind of why now? Tell us a little bit about yourself. We're just thrilled for you to start forward and do this, but just want to give your.
David Stevens, 94 Boothville Road, Institute. Um, I've been working with the rec department for a while, coaching volleyball. My kids have been involved in a lot of stuff, recognizing as well. Um, and I've always been interested in joining some of the town and doing a little bit more. And seeing like a good time, seeing a good time, the opportunity presented itself, so.
How long have you been doing that volleyball stuff, right?
This is my number five, how many years? Many, many, yeah. I've been at the high school for four, five and before that was.
Doing something nice.
Yep, that's great.
Been fun, it's been good?
Oh, it's great. Kids are the best.
I love it. All right.
I hope you, I have no questions. I think it's, I just, you're gonna do very well and I'm sure you'll be a compliment to the booth.
Thank you.
I've actually coached Dave for a while. My, my, my daughters took volleyball on the team with him and he's an amazing coach. He is always in for the kids for the right reasons. And he just doesn't stop, so hopefully it's candidates, I'm all fed up. I really think it's gonna just light up what records already doing, I mean, breaking through the town. Can't wait to see the added effort and care.
Okay, yeah. Two of them, so this is great. That's all. Sorry, I heard you had some playing together, practice or something to go to?
We have youth center clinic.
All right.
At seven.
I'll let you go.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Janus, come on up. How are you?
Good.
So yeah, same kind of sort of thing, just tell us a little bit or something. I always love the why now, why all of a sudden this is crazy, you want to get involved or something.
Well, first of all, I'll say not as much energy as Sarah says. I served on the cultural council for six years and I've had a year off. And I understand that they've had a couple of people drop out and they're in need, so I've thrown my hat back.
And you enjoy your time, that's why you're coming back.
Yeah.
Lot of activity, a lot of things are happening, which is great. We have, as May had sixteen years experience, questions, comments?
Did you get stopped off before just because of the two terms?
Yeah. Yeah, I was co-chair with the mother gal who's chair now and she kind of reached out and said.
Great. I think it's like to not to come back to it.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting, me.
Yeah, that's, it's right, it's very diverse and that, I believe.
Uh, I, I, I enjoy so much that Citro is a cultural town and community. I love that you're good enough that you want to come back and bring that back in. That speaks volumes to me about the fact that it's something that's enjoyable to do. I love the institutional knowledge that you're gonna bring back to the council, so come on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure we're gonna benefit again. From Janus's experience, she's gonna hit the ground running. I appreciate the generosity of your time and your continued dedication.
You're great.
Well, thank you so much for all the years that you served and after the. Years, really, really good, so appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. So folks, if you weren't here earlier, we're gonna take DPW out of order because they have to go check both. Kevin was starting to put the filings, there's a test going on, so we gotta make sure they get out. So we're gonna go, this is the.
What's the way it's now?
It's a waste now. Seven, final.
No, no, it's deep.
Oh, sorry.
It's deep because of the.
Does it have to happen to police and?
While we look, tell us about the, the pile of the, what's happening tonight.
Sure, so what we're doing is, um, they're worried about settlement in the future due to characteristics of the geotechnics. We've deployed, we did three whorings, um, going down there. So the engineers designed a pile test, piles to be installed and it's kind of typical piles to like an auger pile to beat the sewall from setup. So when the contractor started installing them, because the contractor designed. They were having some issues getting their capacity of the piles. So they've come up with a test to check to determine if the piles are criteria to set for. Very exciting, actually, we did go on it, like, several, one of them down.
Yeah, I want to make sure you go up.
So, um, the first project was, um, I'm sure nobody remembers this one, but it's the minded beach parking lot we went up to bid on. And, um, you know, we had a lot of interest in it. We bid at a good time of the year and our little bidder was J. Aaron Sons. We had 11 bidders, so, um, price came in at $272,250.
The, the variety on it for bids, it's incredible.
Mr. Chair, I still don't see it in my back of your.
All right.
93.
It's 93 is the actual breakdown of bids.
Thank you.
But those summer film issues.
Yes, so 93 is the bids, 92. Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The bid was lower than what we set aside at the annual town meeting, so.
Right.
Way for us.
Very excited.
That's great.
Yeah, 272, yeah.
And it was 291 set aside at the annual town meeting.
That's great.
Yeah, but the bids were all.
Yeah, why are they still?
They are.
That's an open bid process. You can bid whatever you want on the project. If nobody showed up and there was only one bid, it was $600,000, that would be the cost. We have to pay it to decide if it's affordable. That's why, you know, a lot of this, we try to make it as competitive as possible because it's advertised throughout the state. We have companies coming from all over the place and bidding it, so for example, if somebody came in at, um, 374, you know, the contract and they were on a wall pole. So they had much further review than anything else. I think a little bit of was Quincy of what? Westwood, okay, Westwood, so it all varies.
Again, folks that don't know, we're looking, we have all these days, one of the bids was like 600,000.
No, it was a lot. We don't usually see that money.
No, it's a lot. Save, they'll have it at savings, extra for a lot of money. Well, question, yeah, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, it's great, though. We've been waiting for this for a month. We have a lineup parking lot, so this is.
Move that the select board award the contract to the rehabilitation of the minded beach paid parking lots. JR and Sons Construction Incorporated of Westport, Massachusetts for $272,250. Contract number 25 REC dash 40.
Just one more second. Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Janus.
Excellent, thank you.
Well done.
The next one is, and Sean kicking into detail on it. It's assigning an engineering firm to continue working on our MS4 permit, which is an unfunded mandate for the state. We have to go through and do certain steps and my part of this charge is to test the phosphorus and everything else.
Guys, yeah, that's right, so this is state mandate, we get to pay for it. And how does? This is the same, this is the same group that we use.
Same engineering firm because if we, if we went with a new firm, it would be, uh, it'd lose a lot, it'd be doing a lot of repetitive tests.
All right, this is all, yeah, this is for the legal discharge.
Improving our nation's water.
And it's bringing out our nation's water, so.
It's right here.
For the mapping of all of this. Questions, comments, understand? So mapping of the law, it's all of this. Questions? Take a motion.
I do not.
Move that the select board award the contract to provide professional engineering and planning services to support Citro's stormwater management program. In compliance with EPA's MS4 general permit to the Horsey Mission roof for $150,000.
Mr. After one more second. Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Take your job.
unanimous.
Yeah, good luck with that test.
He's pressing your umbrella.
Yeah. No, we're just.
Now, we're right back to the 6:15. This is the award of the loan of the Clean Water Trust. This is the interim loan note. Loan program. Nancy will be doing, this is Paige.
14. Last night. 14.
Thank you.
Paige, 14, yes.
So the interim, uh, the septic loan program is a program that helps residents who cannot afford a new septic system or have a failed septic system. They can either connect sewer that's available or they can get their septic system replaced. And a veteran is placed on their property and they pay that, um, the cost to the town of 20 years. This $200,000 was approved in November 2024 special town meeting and it's the third tranche of, uh, $200,000.
We're gonna, this is like, we get that and it's a 0% loan.
Yeah, 0%.
And they pay it back, but it's just case of emergency, well.
The homeowners pay it back with interest, the town pays 0% on that.
That's, again, for emergency use.
Does this get used every?
It, the ministry through the board of health and they had a waitlist waiting for this $200,000 to become available.
How big is the waiting list?
Um, they had at least one person who was waiting. So, I mean, if you think septic system anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. And even pumping up to the sewer system is probably $15,000 to $20,000 between the, uh, B and then the actual work.
Yeah, it's significant to get the finance.
I think it's a great, great, it's a good, it's a saver, it really helps. I have no question.
We did something like this twenty years ago, I mean, it's a tough hole and it's very appreciative. All favor of helping out this.
I see, no, motions. Yeah, take a motion.
I do believe that the year that adopted the vote, the votes pertaining to the issuance of debt to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust is presented to this meeting in writing. To incorporate full tech, the votes into the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
One more, sorry, uh, so Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
How are you? Come on up.
We're doing great, thank you.
Well, actually, look at this, we're ahead of schedule, we don't waste your time.
How about that?
That one lasts.
It's all right, this is a important part.
So, uh, Julie Dunn, Zoom by Nancy Rankin. We affectionately refer to her as the other Nancy. So she will be making a few comments about the work, great work that they did. So she's, she's online.
And before you go any further, further, I have a rule here with PowerPoints. And this is both here and corporate America, please do not read the PowerPoint. Because we'll just speak to the, to the, we know, I know you all, I'm just, I tell everybody that.
And then they don't read it.
Like my 14-year-old doing PowerPoint for school. Don't read it, just talk about it.
Never worry. Okay, so Seth, if we could go to the first, actually officially the second slide and counterpoint that won't be. So committees, uh, makes a good progress, we want to share that. So I'll go through a few things briskly and then leave a few minutes for Nancy Rankin to make some comments. So, next slide, please. Thank you. So formatting a little bit, Nancy, sorry about that. So we already have some CPC funding and you supported this work. We need to report out on a big piece of that. It's not final file, but it's near final. And we wanted to share some nuggets from that. The master plan for this property, a long-range view is critical. And this work will help us narrow the use options. And one of the deliverables tonight that we'll be able to get back from the group is we're proposing narrowing some restrictions on the options. We want to talk to you in the town about the future, just narrowing it somewhat based on what we're planning. As far as other progress, we've got capital plan funds that are working on the upgrade to the caretaker house. I, I'd say it's roughly 70% complete rate support from the facilities group, Cam and his team. They've been doing things very creatively, very efficiently. Uh, we've got some work to do with South Shore Vocational, we're gonna engage to just bring them into the process to help get it across the finish line. So that's important work in the process. It may not be obvious to you all, but when I say a massive clean out of the attic, I do mean a massive clean out. The, the very upper floor was full of actual labor for kids and stuff. And so getting it down through those pull-down stairs in these old homes is not fun, so we had a moving crew hired. Uh, to help us with that, especially with the heavy things. And it is all cleaned out and ready to go to a likely another auction. We've got more surplus, so we want, if someone looked, we think it has some value. So we'll go through the same process we did last time with the first auction, made a little money, got rid of the money. Okay, uh, we've got an additional CPC Rankin request in, so I will dwell on that if we could go to the next slide. So when I talk about the master plan and alignment on uses, uh, this is a graphic on the left just to reinforce. There's a recreational element to this. We had a kayaker gone that Kim Blasky hosted with some friends of the area. Uh, obviously, the brainstorming that goes on in these processes, and so there's this blend of outdoor and indoor. But the scope discussion that I wanted to make sure you have support for is with what we've learned and now get early use out of the, the outdoor space. We're proposing that we be clear that we're proposing no private things for this property. Weddings, graduations, anniversaries. Uh, it just doesn't seem to be consistent with the neighborhood, uh, the sanctuary that we believe we want to create with the mood and the feel of the property. And the parking is limited, so we think we can create a number of issues. Uh, the other thing is commercial leases. We're obviously facing town loans, but we're suggesting that we not allow it to be leased for businesses or storage. So we have the flexibility to do some reference. So hopefully that's supportive of this. Uh, as far as the community input, we'd like to take this as a recommendation to the broader town. We'd like to have an open town meeting. It's been done with many other of these types of initiatives, but we wanted you to know that that's our next step before we actually do it. The general themes that we're looking at is exploring more detail around education. You know, there's a hydro power, it was a functioning solenol for some time, so this is green energy. And we could do some programs related to that. Uh, obviously, with the property being started by the great, great, great grandfather, Abraham Lincoln, there's a genealogy, a story to be told. And so we could partner with schools and other groups on family trees and, and genetics. And then obviously recreation, there's hiking trails that we cut in, kayaking, et cetera. So those are the general themes, is to keep it education, recreation centered. We'd like to link to the schools as best as possible, so offline, if you have good contacts for our team to get in touch with the right people to explore these. So next step would be an open town. I'll skip this step because that's where I want Nancy Rankin to join in, but that's, uh, some of the points on the weight group study. This is the active CPC request, so we can skip through this for just for your records. These are things that we can already see out of the next round of findings that we would like to, uh, to possibly look for with yet a new CPC request. Uh, one thing that we did find as you go down the list a little bit is there's a small amount of asbestos around the fireplace chimney in the barn in the middle of the building. We have some ideas about how to use that and we need to address that appropriately before we have people working in there or any of the kinds of tests of that. It might be the only thing, but some of the things that we, it's very limited to one particular area, but it's important to do it right. And then as we invest more and more in the property, things related to security, basic levels of security. Okay, next slide. Uh, so this is the town meeting, the next step, so we'll schedule it in the near future. Appropriate location to get, but we'll get the word out on it. Hopefully, we'll begin to further refine that the, the ideas with regards to long-range use out of that particular meeting. And that will help us fuel the first round of the solenol match. So those are the, those next steps. With the next left step is a summary. So are you comfortable with the exclusions that we referenced? Are you okay with us going to broader town at this point in life of the project? And we appreciate your support on the next round. So any comments on that before I try to get a little bit of time from Nancy?
Yeah, we'll talk about that, so you've been working on this a long time or we thought something that, uh, probably that's, you know, a little. Makes sense to you?
Yeah, it does. I mean, partly there's restrictions on using CPC funds. Um, the city of the smaller area. Um, I do think there's similar opportunities that would play to other towns on that, in store buildings. Um, the conservation space is a lot of opportunity to, with trips. There's every time I've been there, there's painting classes, there's trip, so it's really like small, more of a smaller trip. It's a part, I mean, it's 12, it's a lot.
Right.
Not really like wedding, many, I don't know, maybe. So, but I, I mean, the committee has got an outstanding job with this. And really, all committees, they really don't have a divided partner. There's typically a crew that puts out the house, a crew that manages the plan, the communications. Yes, Cam, so they've done a great job and I think, um, there's some, also some really good findings when other Nancy gets to speak on the house. But I mean, that's my feeling.
Yeah.
Make it totally exist.
Mr. Chairman, I've been over there. It is a small footprint relatively speaking. Seated with history, environmental, pleasant trees. There's a nice trail they cut in all the way around the perimeter of the property. The party is although efficient, unlimited. So I'm in agreement with, uh, these people have a great focus on what they're doing. They know like the back of their hand, so we have to trust them. I do believe in their, their goals at stake.
I just went over there the first time yesterday or the day before and I was blown away about how beautiful it is up there. And super excited to see it transform to, um, give it even more. You know, I was peeking in the windows feeling I should have called Jim and show me around because I want to see it all. But I'm, I'm super excited to see it, um, move forward. Is the idea to have somebody living in the caretaker's house and then a larger house be like a museum?
Yes, the, the idea with the apple plant over group was to get it in shape for a caretaker. We want to have a presence of the site, not a heavy in a security kind of thing, but just a presence. And, uh, and also a lot of opportunity to show them. Pretty nice view.
I, I mean, it's a beautiful property, I've done it a number of times now. It's, it's basically work you guys have done, uh, committee to get it for the town organizing and. and start putting the natural nature skate back outside. The main question I have on scope exclusions would be relative to maybe looking at it as a numbers game and not as a use game. The main question I have is, Susan, I might have been sort of joking about it, but I think if somebody wanted to have a 20-person wedding and walk out to the north of Situate, why not allow them to have a wedding in a beautiful space if it's a small people? And I'm just hypothetical here. Rather than saying that private events or something else can't be used in that space. And I guess my point would be that what in the future of the property looks to be something that you can do with the space relative to making a profit back for the property that helps support the social society or the trustees or property itself, as opposed to simply things like community projects that will blow up or what have you, which I'm all in favor of. I'm just curious how the committee looks at property as well setting its costs other than looking to the CPC and other funding.
The idea of having a commercial opportunity has come up a number of times, and I think the issue is more about size and complexity than it is fundamental opposition to trying to offset some of these factors economically. The specific example you gave is an interesting one in that if it's a one-person wedding ceremony, that's more in keeping with the spirit of the place than it is a 20-person wedding that then has, you know, a wedding reception and all that. So, I know that's a fine distinction, but that's an example of maybe crossing a line of those kind of things. But if it's this group's interest, it's town's asset. So, it's this group's interest to not be quite as black pointing on that one exclusional scope. Fantastic. People can look at some options, you know, that, look at that. And maybe the additional feedback, that would be helpful. If you want us to do that, is their size, you know, roughly in mind? Because of the nature of the neighborhood, it's a, you really want to get into this. But it is a lot more foot traffic now in the area, not only because of more, I like it becoming a more known entity, but with the opening of Split Rock, there's a lot of foot traffic in the area. It's the size of gathering that, it's already tricky space, one-way bridge, a lot of foot traffic. So, those things would be on the table. The general idea of making a little bit of revenue, I understand.
Well, and let me be clear, I want to be very careful to respect the nature of the property and the goals that the committee and the town is setting for use of the property. I'm not suggesting, you know, open spaces for commercial interests. I'm simply suggesting that if we limit it based on some kind of use definition or the limiting things that may very well fall into the range of foot traffic or attendance that would be acceptable from the parking and from other types of aspects. And we may be self-limiting on the funding that we might be able to get in perfectly acceptable uses that goes back to the, you know, capital projects on the site as well as supporting the major statement. So, I'm not saying that I want to open up a slippery slope. I'm suggesting that if we're going to talk about exclusions, that maybe we look at number of attendees at property, foot traffic, and the number of cars in the parking lot, rather than whether or not it's necessarily some type of use happen.
That would be my question. Yeah, well, so. I guess I wouldn't be too nervous about, even if we give the direction today about, oh, we're going on. That doesn't mean 10, 15 years, then. We're not, we're not writing this. So, no, again, this is a policy. All those properties change and, you know, people will get married by the light of day. But part of this is just what's the direction for them to look for grants to get, they've got to deliver this baby. Right. We're not really using it yet, so are we going to look at wedding venue folks? But no, let's, let's get this over the line and let's get folks in. I'm with you, I just don't know if, okay, we say nothing under 30, and then all of a sudden, two fifth-grade classes go up there and being a student. And now, oh, well, that was moving our policy, because there's 42 kids.
Right.
Because I'm with you, I think this is, I mean, this is really, how do we get, how do we get a caretaker in there? How do we get?
Building up a share.
Very early here, yeah.
And it's irritable, right? Like, we're going to, it'll change over time, right?
Right. It's all totally a change.
We take our elementary school there as one of the stops.
Right.
On their west corner.
Charge admission to the town.
And one of us is smaller than Walcott's anyway.
Exactly.
I'm simply saying that I want to be cautious that we're not, you said, we're not writing this into a deep restriction. We're not, I want to make sure that we're essentially giving the committee a starting point to focus. Saying, like you said, get across the finish line, apply for CPC funding, et cetera, with grants.
Sure, we're actually not giving a start, but we're continuing where they poured out the commence. We to the next phase.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three hundred and eighty. Like, that's what came up, and I wanted to address that as a, I don't want overly to admit that simply to say, you're doing great work, and you're doing it. I just, I like the idea of kind of think about best and highest use and limiting damage to the environment and sort of stuff.
Yeah, I think the.
I'm sure that's what Ted was.
Point of this next step is to, is to narrow down to a few areas that we can do more building on as far as cost. So, if that's one that we want to open up a little bit so that we then learn more about it, things like restroom facilities, other things that go with that. The outside space is under the conservation restriction. So, we're really talking about the bar in the middle and the main house. And I think that's very reasonable for us to carry. We're not yet declaring this to be the end of life. We're trying to narrow the field a little bit, and that's how.
Yeah, so I guess that input too, yeah. Yeah, even if there's anything else you could, you know.
With revenue, it's all, it's all good. Very good. All right.
Oh, no, we still have.
We need to hear a little bit about Nancy. We didn't pay for the studies.
Seth, if we could move, we have just a couple, just two, two things for Nancy Rankin. So, we could pull up what's called the appendix, the other presentation.
Short one, mine.
Thank you. So, Nancy, can you hear us, and can we hear you, Nancy?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, loud and clear.
Great.
Nancy's with Weight Associates, they've been great partners in this. They've got a great resume that led us to have them in the first place. So, I've asked Nancy to hit a couple of things. The, this report that's in near final state is over 100 pages of treasure trove information about the history, the architecture, et cetera. A little bit of true, that obviously. But I did ask Nancy to hit on two things. So, Seth, next slide, please. Importantly, is this just an old structure, or is it truly something we can verify? We talk about it's truly historic in nature. So, Nancy, if you could comment on the statement of significance for this.
Sure, yeah. Well, maybe just to start, I do want to say we've really enjoyed working with Jim Dishong and Jim Glinsky and the rest of the committee. You know, as we've gotten to know the Mordecai Lincoln property over the summer, it's just been fascinating. And we, we can't commend the town of Situate enough to have the foresight to acquire the property in order to preserve its historic integrity and its environmental beauty for, for future generations of, of the community. So, that's just terrific. And I think one of our key tasks in this effort was to work towards a statement of significance for the historic character and attributes and quality of the house. And the key finding here is that we do have an authentic first-period property, which is rare, obviously, and really elevates the significance of the house in particular. There are a number of pieces of building fabric that we have been able to identify on the interior, which hasn't been previously documented. And so, we'll be working particularly with Jim Glinsky and the Massachusetts Historical Commission to move forward with a national register determination of eligibility and listing. Just based on that alone, there are other obvious connections and criteria with the property, including its ability for future archaeological connections, as well as its strong connection to not only Mordecai Lincoln and all of his descendants, but one of them being Abraham Lincoln, the President of the United States, as we all know. And really, 200 years of that, that family being in, in this house. So, next slide.
So, the next slide is a great piece of work showing the evolution of the footprint over time. So, just, just to give you a little snippet of the good work that Nancy, if you could walk through the evolution quickly.
Yeah, we spent a couple of days with a team of our architects and historic building conservators and materials scientists to evaluate the building alongside structural engineers and a historic landscape architect. So, this is just a sampling of, of our understanding of the house as we were investigating the building fabric. What you see all the way on the left is the contemporary outline of the footprint of the building in black. And what you see in red is the earliest period, the first-period house construction that between some archival research that both Jim Glinsky had done before we were involved in the project, as well as some of our research into probate and wills associated with early members of the Mordecai Lincoln family, we've been able to determine quite a bit about the original footprint of the house and confirmed that with some of the physical fabric that's still remaining. Obviously, a lot more of that would be unveiled, in particular, the frame of the building, as any preservation work is done over the course of the project. And then, you can see, we took sort of five key transitions in the evolution of the house that largely mirror certain changes in ownership, continuing all the way through the green era of the diagrams with the Lincoln family itself. In the early 20th century, the property changes and moves out of the Lincoln family. And in the late 20th century, is owned by the Lads. And in the whole 20th century, there's real care and sort of rediscovery and a colonial revival effort that is just very fascinating to sort of see how much is retained still and then how the aspects of the building were changed. And what this really, I think, gives everyone the opportunity to do is to retain those layers of history, use them to tell the story of the house over this long, long period of time and interpret different parts of the house in different ways. There's, I think, something was said earlier about making sure that we have kind of a loose plan for the building because we know that it will change, that uses of buildings really don't stay static. And in order for preservation to hold fast, you need to have that mentality and understand what you have, the character-defining features of that, and how to enhance those and support those with a use that's, that's gentle, but also provides some financial stability. Next slide.
I think Nancy, just for the sake of time.
Of time, yep.
For shaven, so there are a few slides in there in the report that talk about, as the key suggests, there's a lot of specific features in each floor of the house that they've documented. Unfortunately, we don't have time to go through, we won't do that. But I did want you to understand that this is a foundational piece of work that we're delivering. That there's been a lot of informal work that's been done, but now we have professional people documenting this properly. And we're very appreciative of Nancy and her team. So, I think we better try to wrap up.
A more comprehensive understanding of what we have, right? And this was, this was why we commissioned the study, to get a more comprehensive understanding of what we have. We knew we purchased something great, just didn't know all the details of it and the history of the lives. So, this was.
Nancy, even the limited graph and what was located, exactly what Susan was talking about, it's absolutely fascinating. The amount of history here we'll define, and you're right, there's so much more that is eye-opening.
It really is. And one last plug that I'll make, and I think Nancy's firm is very supportive of this. As we've learned about how we restore this property, we need to include in the next steps this master plan of landscape, because we have structures that aren't connected, but they need to be connected, but they need to be connected in a historically appropriate manner. We've got the interface between the conservation area and the historical educational area. And we want to make sure that that is seamless and well thought out. We've got drainage issues, grading issues. So, all of these things need to be dealt with fundamentally sound engineering. We get a master landscape is, is a piece of the next step. Not to make it artificially pretty, that's not what I mean by landscape. Yeah, no, no, a master cycle.
Right, to facilitate the use, right, like the walk and pass around the property.
Safety, access to the way, but in a way that was supportive.
Yeah.
Right, right.
If I could just add, if I could add one more thing about that, I, I do feel like the landscape can be seen as another opportunity for interpretation of the history of the site and the other agrarian buildings that was, were there, the way that the salt marsh was used, how the mill functioned and its relationship to the water around the site. I think there's a, you know, a really great integration and holistic approach that you can bring to the whole property. You know, the house is sort of maybe the, the center of the, the work we did. We did also look at the mill. The caretaker's house is, you know, an excellent piece of that whole arc of, of historical story of the property. But the, the rest of the landscape isn't just plain landscape. There are archaeological remnants and, and previous buildings, and it, it really has an opportunity there as well.
Love it. Questions?
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, we stole whole park.
340 years, only to work, you know. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
We're just putting on the scope.
This is fabulous, thank you so much.
Thanks, Nancy.
Nancy, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I think it's really good. That'd be a lot more.
Yeah.
Share all the likes.
Oh, we need a motion?
Really?
Fair enough.
All right.
You have our direction.
Go forward, go forward.
He's doing good work.
Gee, how are you?
Good.
You are.
Silent alarm, why? Hold on a way, I'm just.
I learned.
I learned a lot.
Doctor's talk. Yes, this is a very stealthy presentation.
All right. Also about false alarms and how many.
Well, unlivable.
Yeah, I pulled some additional numbers today. I mean, really, the reason why we're here is to just try to put a mechanism in place to help her some of the problems that we have. We don't have a huge problem, but we do have some commercial establishments, particularly that you run the shoes with. We have tried to work with business in these cases for several years to resolve problems. They don't get resolved, and we really feel like at this point, most communities have something like this place where we can kind of maybe bring things together a little bit, hopefully, and have something go. So, kind of anticipation to look at this, I pulled a couple of other reports today. We really, if you look at fiscal year '25, our kind of top offender, and I don't want to get into all the shame.
Yeah.
Was it 25 calls for this one year? So, two a month, maybe doesn't seem a lot, but a lot of times, they might be compressed into a shorter period of time. And when you have kind of the same time every day, there's a call for a false alarm. Before you even, they even say where it is, you can go like, I know where this is going to be, and show them where this is. That impacts the way officers are responding, it obviously ties up resources. The next highest person was 17, the next one was six. Like, those are your top three for the year. So, you can see, like, a really big number. If you look at a five-year work, this same business was at 66.
Yeah.
The next one year, in five.
In five years, 66, 12.
The next highest, which I'll say was closely related to the first one, was 54. So, just between those two businesses, that's representing well over 100 calls. Next highest is 30, and then you run that props off. Five years back. So, we're not looking at a ton of businesses, we're talking about. We're talking about a few, so I don't want to make it seem like all of a sudden every business or resident town winds up getting hit with this. It's just, the hope is to give us a pool that when we do have business that we're working with, we kind of have guidelines that we can follow, and that's what we want to do with. There there is actually something that's going to happen at the end of this. I was just saying, something.
Right, yeah, I mean, and so the proposal against other towns have been doing this. We have some unfortunate number of false alarms, some dozens, dozens.
I think it's just motivating, to motivate individuals to respect the usage of the alarm and to understand the procedures. I think if I have one haunted false alarm a year, a thousand years, most alarms around my father's birthday, I don't know why.
Coincidence.
So around that time, I look around for that.
In that, understandably, things do happen, whether it's business or whether it's a private residence. We totally get that. Happy to come out, check things out. Um it's just when you when you see patterns and it's not able to be corrected, this case is a consequence.
Maybe you give it up, three strikes, and then the fourth, and the fourth you get. In many strikes.
Many strikes. I do have a question. On the commercial businesses, it's not always that they own the building. Does the does the fine go to the owner of the building or the person that's leasing, or you don't care, it goes to the owner and they figure it out with their lease?
So I think we would look at the specific business, um but I think if that's something, we would always be having a conversation first. So if we find that XYZ company is leasing space from building owner and it's it's the building owner's concern, then we come up to have a conversation. I think a little bit different than a fire alarm, this is generally specific to that business and the way they're operating. And most of the time, these aren't happening because there's a mechanical issue.
Yeah.
This is a culture and it winds up being a user problem.
Right, right.
Every time the delivery guy shows up at eight in the morning, he sets off the alarm.
Right.
And that's and that's where you tend to see.
Yeah. Okay.
So, you know, I don't want to make this such a, hey, this is a bright line, roll four, what comes in, automatically something's going on. It should be that we're having a conversation, working with the business for the residents to try to resolve the problem.
But you have a magnet.
But we have a mechanism in place.
There's like lack of attention to the problem.
So we look at specifically hanging capacity, oh well, they all have things in place. This is kind of a little bit of a mixture of one of the types of.
Um is there a lot of residential alarms going off, or is this more of a commercial?
It's, I would say it's more of a commercial problem. Um we do have the ones and twos here and there. Um and the same type of thing. I think any, we've never seen anything like this from a residential standpoint. If you do, we're able to have a conversation and it's quickly taken care of. Um and again, it's a larger users head a lot of times in commercial, those restaurants that they are having burgers coming out. But again, there is to be a whole ship and it needs to be managed by us.
So Chief, is there a difference between uh silent alarms going off, the false alarms going off that's related to a alarm system versus a fire?
So this is just looking, this is not related to that. And I had a conversation with Chief Duncan. Actually, we were just having a kind of talking through this. They don't necessarily see problems like this. And if they do, they do tend to be more of a mechanical or some other type of issues happening versus human intervention. Um so if they do see a one, two, or three happening, they're able to have a conversation and work with the alarm company. They've got a mechanical issue, they've got an integrity, they can go and show people how to agree.
And I think that mostly answered my question, but I I could speak for myself. I I don't know if you've been in my house, but we we put in our, you know, addition, and this happens a lot situated. You're handed by code to have certain wired systems. Those are mandatory calls. And the only concern I had was that that something like a fire response, mandatory CO detector goes off. We, I don't know how many times in the three in the morning when it first happened, I called, I said, hi guys, really sorry, you know who I am, we're all awake, obviously now we're we're safe, don't need to come. And they go, we know, we have to come.
We're coming.
And what I fear is that residents are going to, they're not going to get, I'm saying this sort of as a monkey's paw on his hand, the way we're describing this, residents who are having CO detector go off two a few times a week because there's something faulty, they're not getting deemed because they're trying to fix the problem.
And we would expect those things.
It's not a silent alarm.
Yeah.
It's by everybody.
No, I just want to clarify.
That's my job.
There's a difference. And you don't tend to get, um if you see something that, oh, it went off, that our NICO's placed, this is the third time, okay, we get just installed in the alarm and it's a warning curve. Or things happen, there's a storm and everybody's alarmed to go home. Like, we understand those things. Um again, it's just kind of that mechanism that there is.
I like the like the part of having the team when necessary for users.
But it's going to start with policy because because bug in our staff, bug in our response time.
So this is very difficult for fire alarms, but not in what we're working on right now in practice.
Correct.
This is just.
Right, so you all have a like separate account?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was really good.
Yeah, we're comprehensive. Again.
Thank you for putting this together.
Motion?
Sixty six.
Yeah.
Uh yes, are you going to roll it? All right, motion please.
Move that the select board adopt the attached alarm response fee schedule.
One second, Nico, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. It's, well, after your fourth time, it's a hundred dollars. And then.
So your first, your fourth time, fifth time, and sixth time is fifty dollars. And for residential, your seventh, eighth, and ninth are a hundred dollars. And your tenth and anyone after that is a hundred fifty. For commercial alarms, your fourth, fifth, and sixth will be are a hundred dollars. Your seventh, eighth, and ninth go up to two hundred dollars. And tenth and beyond, like say if you get sixty, it's three hundred dollars a week. So there would be a conversation. And these are silent alarms. So these are like burglary alarms, not your smoke detector or your CO two detector. And these are false alarms. It's not if you show up and there's someone that throws something. The windows, for example, have to be a legitimate call.
Legitimate? That does not count towards your call.
Does not count towards your call.
It does not.
If there's an actual armed robber in your building.
So this might uh show up every week.
To be clear.
It's very graphic. And this, I I'm hoping that we won't have to use this at all if we deal with Eric.
Well, it's good to have a policy. It is good to have. And the policy is similar to other grounds like Orwell and capacity and the other one. Hang on.
Great.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Let's talk basketball.
Basketball? It's good. Other than that?
Full key is here. We have to keep scrolling down for all these false alarms. All right, there we go. All right. Anyway, take us through these amazing reports.
Yep, so Nico Morgen,设计 Director.
Thank you, Mary, President of the Syracuse Basketball Association and also on the recognition.
And Mark Melbeck, Design Principal with Activitas, also who read the subcast.
So we figured out um after some recent uh feasibility studies done by Marcus Dean that the courts are in disrepair. Um they potentially need to be completely torn out and redone, which is why we have this proposal set forth today by Activitas. Um we're looking at potentially putting in the post tension concrete for three of the courts out there, and includes the two courts that are enclosed and also the court that is outside of the fence. Um there would be completely new fencing around the around the two car ports that have the fencing. Um a concrete plaza area with an accessible wood to the courts, which attaches the court on the outside to the two ports on the inside. And also improved drainage at the base of the hill. The existing brick wall that you guys are familiar with uh will remain as well as um the bleachers. And relocate, there would be a relocation of the existing shed that's there, which is way next to the port that sits on the outside of the fence.
Do you have a picture of this?
No.
Like real life picture?
I don't have, I don't have.
So the shed.
I can I can get that over to you.
No, I mean, I thought I saw what it's supposed to be. We have that design, what it's supposed to be.
So the shed not being touched on.
So the shed will be, we're moving the shed to the other side, the far side of the port. Same shed, same shed.
Without losing the shed.
Without losing the shed.
Correct.
That would upset them.
That's sad.
Yep.
When was this first built?
So over twenty years.
Yeah.
It's definitely on board now, where it is.
So we worked with the Central Basketball Association, um and they retained a testing agency while um they wanted to resurface it because a lot of surfacing's made it wrong. Um and this is after the second time that it's been resurfaced. Um and they were entertaining votes to get it resurfaced again. Et cetera. But let's identify why it's flaking off because they had a resurface, it's flaking off after ten years. Um so SBA hired a uh testing agency, Thunderfly Sports Test, and they came out and they built some holes in the concrete and tested the humidity of the concrete slab. And the humidity in that slab was coming up at like nineties. Um so really, that's another way to research the slab, even with the top side vapor barrier in order to have circulation here and spinning out there for a decent amount of time. Uh so there's more of a subsurface issue there uh that needs to be addressed. The only way to do that is unfortunately.
Mark, what what would be the normal life span of a brand new port today?
Yeah, so right now, the tennis courts that we just did, those are warranty for twenty five years.
Do we understand some reasoning why at twenty, for episode twelve, eighteen, really the most years, you know, they're surfaced?
Yes, it's really that uh the moisture issue. And you have theories uh that it's coming up from through the base. When we did the tennis courts, uh we put down a vapor barrier. I don't know if that vapor barrier was compromised or in disruption. Um also, that slope coming down towards the ports has a French drain, stone French drain in the base. Um.
And are we proposing the same kind of vision for the new?
We're proposing the same kind of treatment that we did over at the tennis courts. Uh we're also in that number, it's the technical element here, can often take a look at permissions as well, so that any proposed design reflects uh what the earth over there is actually doing.
The other question I had was relative to the tennis courts, we've tried to have good communication. I think we've been working on it a bit to make sure that bikes, skateboards, and other things that are hot tennis players are also branding ports. Um this is right next to the skate park. I think it would be appropriate that we finish this project. I think we already have a sign there, but let's double check how we put signage up and how we communicate to the youth that are doing perfectly acceptable things on the skateboard park. But they should be doing that on the courts. We don't want things to be flaking on the surface.
And the proposal right now actually imposes all three courts, which in the sense. Um so the the concrete plaza, the team too, uh will be open, but all three courts.
All fairly closed.
And and we can put signage.
Which will certainly help keep people off.
I I want our I want our kids to be able to like skateboarding and like biking and scootering a bit. But I want them to have the opportunity to do that. But we have a facility for that. I'd like to really encourage coaches and and teachers and anybody that's in that property to to understand there's common sense here and there's reasons, not only safety, but also asset management. Stay in the appropriate space.
Sure. Nice. Ask just a few questions to understand the extent of the project. So the existing substrate is what?
Underneath the the courts right now. Uh we don't entirely know because we haven't dug through it. Um.
So we're replacing that with insulated concrete?
We're we're taking the existing post tension concrete out. Um and then we'll, we're going to, as part of the design, we'll do some test pits around the edges so that the courts can remain in use. We're not going to be pouring through it because if we had proposed tension lines, it's dead. Uh so we'll do some test pits underneath, on the side, excuse me, to try to get a better idea of what the profile is. I mean, um if we need to uh enhance that subbase before the new concrete goes down, we will use. And I just pulled up a quick image. I don't know if you want to take a look at this, but.
I don't.
There is one on the Facebook page too, is there?
Probably look them up on Google Earth.
You got it on Google?
Have it on this one. It's my go to.
Because I'm trying to understand the the process. We have a failed failed top surface now.
Yep.
And you're saying it's part of it because of the moisture coming through the insulated concrete?
Yes.
And so what are we going to do to deal with the moisture coming through the tetralite?
So we're going to put in a brand new French drain at the base of the.
Okay, that pulls off a lot of water.
Correct. Uh two, um because this will most likely have to go through uh planning for the stormwater permit, you know, we're going to have to have a whole stormwater drainage analysis. Three, um going with um a a very thick poly on the deep end ports, much like we did at the tennis courts, help any kind of vapor transmission from the subgrid up to the slab.
Okay, so beneath the new tetralite concrete, we're going to have a big blanket. Oh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Floor guy. Yeah, no, it's good. It helps explain. I still judge problems down again. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
And this number is also some community engagement. We already had some community engagement um through the SBA um to reach out to the neighbors, uh because one of the elements uh that's is the third court was to do some uh pickleball struggling uh for three pickleball courts. That.
Oh.
It wasn't very positive.
It's positive response.
It also now happens.
Yeah, so you can always circle back too, if you feel like the the need is there, but not this time.
Could be other locations.
Rhythm part.
Um no, I think that the question I want to ask is, opening an alarm to open the door, so we're good?
Motion?
Sure.
I'm ready.
Okay.
Last chance, one more.
Move to award a contract to Activitas of Dead of Massachusetts for design permitting and bidding of the existing basketball courts at the Syracuse High School, the amount of ninety seven dollars, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Seven.
My next question, say I love him, Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Maybe not good.
No, it's bad.
Right. We're going to.
I don't see that.
We're going to. On Nick.
Nick.
Special time here.
I can speak for that if you want.
Well, gets this here.
Bruce is here? Yeah. Oh, there it is.
My, I can recognize you. I was there. I'll wait my turn. We don't know. Maintenance. All right, tell us, I was, that's where we're doing this open space maintenance. Much needed. I appreciated it today. That was out. One of our trails. Tell us.
So it's two years ago, um it gave a commission thirty five thousand dollars to use the maintenance on our different trails, parks, um properties, et cetera. And um it's worked out well. We were able to really up our game at the Driftway Park and a few other properties um that needed some serious upkeep. And uh we've used majority of that money, a few thousand bucks stuff, I think. Um at least, let's be round it up to the numbers for this.
I forgot it.
Four thousand two hundred and fifty four dollars and four cents. But uh so what we. But, so what we'd like to do is keep going with those sort of improvements. The big piece Jen and I have talked about is back at the Driftway Park. When you walk into the park and we walk along the river towards the pier and then you take a left, there's a bank there that's pretty serious on the road. And I spent, take some, some funds, probably try to. My, my thought is that we'll, we'll reinforce that with a real, a large stone, we need to twenty four inch, maybe twelve, twenty four inch stone, sort of rip route that out of the bank and on that stretch. And this money doesn't go where I thought it would do that kind of work. So I don't have a budget for it at this point, but thumbnail would be upwards of twenty, twenty four thousand dollars, something like that. And then we'd like to keep going on some of the Driftway parks that most use properly. We don't really have a great volunteer system. We have people that help out and get back to us with different issues. But I like a lot of the Damon and Ellis and all those, we've got this wonderful group of volunteers. They keep trails amazingly clear, working. The Driftway Park, we don't really sort of have that same support. We keep working at it a little bit. Folks do help us, but it's just a busy place. And, and then we will have some other things, mowing. You know, we don't wanna mow the fields. We're not gonna keep them on. We'd like to keep trail mowing and periodically cut things down so we don't get out of control. And just a series of things like that. We fixed up the bridge going into Teasherman and CPC actually, it's like the bridge, but then it needed to be higher and then we did some rails. So I think a couple thousand bucks to do the actual work on the, on the bridge. So it's that kind of thing. It's not specific and one thing, but I can tell you we, we have a lot of projects and we're trying to use it sparingly. But it goes quickly.
Just the, the accessways in the parking lots unpredictably need work. If it's a bad winter, trees fall, work like that. It says just get done and keep them.
We also try to collaborate with the Arts Association and keeping up the road that goes into Ellis. Our parking lot is at the end, but a lot of folks that lose Ellis, I got to their place, so we sort of work together to keep that roadway maintained. So.
My guess is. Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, you almost never, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, wow.
First, you can't because you don't know what tree is gonna fall. You don't know what pond was gonna be there. If there's anything that people will contact me about, aside from groundwater, besides parking at the beach, what can we do to substitute those trails? And safety, accessibility, thank God, there's been some extremely generous families throughout. Have generations, be of the Fang, for some of those amazing trails that I want every day. I can't tell you. Actually, I can't tell this. Okay. I see these like dog walkers, cattle from Morlow, especially from the front. Hey, um, who was just there and they go to all those different places and told me to see everything. And trails and the globus that are both roll shops or like it's a, it's an economic driver of the wealth. I guarantee it is. I'm talking to them and told me about this. So thank you for the work that you've done. It is work that's worth gold because of what it's done. See, it's amazing. If anyone here hasn't been there on some of these trails, shame on you. You should because they're absolutely gorgeous. Sorry about that. That's a prejudiced conversation.
I'm just as much supportive of everything you guys are doing. I think that, like you said, any sum of dollars for effort that you put in, it's volunteer, it's fine. It makes it, you guys managed to keep up this town. We vote every year essentially at town meeting, trying to improve funding for gaining total space for the pure benefit of having all of our residents have access to it. But weeds grow regardless of whether or not people are there or not. And things break and trails have competition and erosion and all sorts of things. So fully support of this and I can't thank you guys enough. I put a few hours in here and there, over my years with trail maintenance and it's not easy work. And you gotta schlep up, you know, a little chainsaw, half a mile, it's the worst to cut down. Must you either self bust a trail or you have to carry a big black over your shoulder. Now, cut what's high down and then go get a course on for it. So it's a lot of effort and I thank all the volunteers that are constantly now working on the trails. But even those that actually come back to the conservation commission other places or, or Frank, Jen to say, hey, I was, I was on the deck the other day and I saw this or I was up in, you know, or if I like a trail and I saw this. It really does help to advise those puddles, those new little things that pop. Makes that job a little bit easier, but a little bit of funding go a long way. So I do.
I'm all in support of this. I feel like AJ's friends used to do the trail maintenance down there, but now we're all. But my one question is, you said you didn't mow and like, I feel like the cross, like that field, like those nine and a half acres that are on top, they're starting to grow in and I feel like trees are starting to grow in. The idea is that that's being held for agriculture. Like is that gonna be mowed? Is that in this thirty five thousand dollars like it is or like?
We did mow Appleton this spring. We mowed the pot that was already semi-glass. We had Leo Costello was a contractor, did it with this brush hog, uh, out of these equipment. But to your point, the, the back, it's a pot that's been sort of starting to be grown up. And, and we might be able to hit another area there and get that down. What we're, what we're trying to do with the fields is, is kind of once a year, late winter, early spring, after animals don't really be in protection enough with overgrowth, but before they start to nest. I learned this sort of the goal when we, we cut, we do keep a trail. Mike Lakey was good enough to cut a trail around Water Street. Our volunteers keep a trail, mow it, just so people run and takes things like that. But that's one of our goals is to once a year, at the right time, mow those as well.
I would just love to see that actually.
Well, you know, we just had a little get together, so Sally, the other day, they're doing the Appleton field within the embosser. And their program's growing considerably. And we just haven't found a farmer. If we're gonna have someone find it, we want them to do it responsibly. We want it to be organic, pesticide free. And the big half of this was water, so we could figure out. If we can figure out water, then I think we'll have more interest. But this is kind of a, so until then, we were just not gonna let it get out of, out of control.
All good.
Yeah, full support.
Thank you.
Great job.
We're the face here, but we have some just wonderful, wonderful volunteers that, that are out there and get back to us. So we're really fortunate.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Nancy, you are up. Else, two new state laws, right?
Yeah.
Likely should comply.
Yeah.
Fly with state law.
And Nico, that's the number we assigned for the Bible review committee. Two laws passed, um, twenty twenty four relative to tax titles for tax things specifically to act, to act for poses. And also Ollie's law, which speaks to counts. So Article nine and Article ten of the special town meeting are to amend the general Bible laws to bring them into the statute. And Council reviewed the language that proposed, the Bible review reviewed the language that proposed. And they positively, positively recommended it to the select board to forward it.
All right, questions? I don't know what the tech, I guess.
Oh, no, we saw that before.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
No, no puppy notes. We're anti-puppy note.
Yeah.
All right.
Well done.
Well done. Mainly, it's a lot of definitions.
It's really.
Which is really important to have the definitions and our bylaws match the state definition.
All right, music, Mr. Gibson. You're up. Music to my ears. I'm high on it. You think I'm kidding? I love it.
So Nico, Priya, nothing we've met. Chair of the planning. All the four here is our vice chair as well. New Rashen, Chris, is still part of maybe the summer. So we have one item for special town meeting infiltration, inflow or involution. It is a.
Not this yet, though.
It is for sewer, it's a general maintenance project, but essentially I think here's this the volume, it cleans up the pathway, it's a lot of our sewer. So that's some of these projects in recent years. Egypt Beach was the last couple of years where we significantly up hold our ants, increase volume. Uh, it's two hundred thousand dollars to come from retained earnings. Or it was circa, we got them. This was originally an item on, what we call a six capital plant. So it would have been part of April's annual town meeting. There's insufficient retained earnings at the time, so it's tabled. Have sufficient retained earnings to be able to fund the city. So it's two hundred thousand dollars. It's similar to how we fund roads inside box annually from EPW, which is just an ongoing item that we continually have to, uh, issue about. So our committee, the committee honestly, four zeros for maintenance for special town meeting.
Well, this is a question.
Very good.
Were you, with the, the smoke test, this is more of a, for Jen, like the smoke testing, kind of some real problems. Here's, that means it's the big deal for some of those.
And this is, as Mike said, this is the, we have a big project, the tight lining. This is more the final leak zone. We gotta replace the pipe. We gotta replace the manhole covers with watertight manhole covers. Those are really expensive. This is the I I hall of the town.
And then we can really attack them.
These are, this is that annual thing that if we do.
So long as we have sufficient container, we don't borrow.
Correct.
As you said, the one down in Egypt Beach was huge. That was eleven thousand gallons of sand, the estimate.
She got.
Looking. That we have taken out of the system, see what.
The acid provides power capacity for, you know, use that sewer or such.
Big surprise.
We were talking about this. I'm not watching.
I did not.
Excellent. This is good.
Love it.
All right. That was easy, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Good to see you all.
You did see me. You explained so well.
We'll see you soon.
See you soon.
All right, Bob, you are up.
All right.
Oh, Bruce.
Bruce, was that you, you lost?
They heard my rule earlier.
Not to recreate the PowerPoint. Yes, absolutely.
It is, it is good advice though.
No, it's behind those couple meetings.
I agree.
Uh, thank you for your time. By way of introduction, I think you want to be Bruce. Bruce is the chair of the Water Leaver Commission. My name is Bobby Lorenzo. I've been a resident since nineteen eighty six, served on a number of different boards and committees in town. And we're here today to ask for your support for what I think will be Article seven at the special town meeting, which is to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To commission a study to understand how desalination technology may give us another opportunity for water resource for the town. By way of procedure, Andrew, do I need to read the article or are we good?
No.
Okay. There's two, there's two points I'd like to leave you with on this, on this week. One is the word augment. I think when we, you think, when people hear about desalination, I think there's a tendency to think that we're gonna use any sort of technology to replace the water resources that we currently have, and that's not the case. If you wanted to put a number on augment, if we use rough numbers, a million and a half gallons of water a day. If you could find three to five hundred thousand gallons a day, twenty to thirty percent. You've done a great job in augmenting your supply and giving you additional resource for when things get pretty dry, after you know they can be. If you've been around for the last five years. There's, there's two different push and pulls on the system. One is depending on the technology you find. Is it potable water that you can now use to recharge your wells? Or is it clean water that's used for non-portable sources, sources that just take the stress off of your drinking water supply? So there's two different ways that we can benefit from this and, and the recharging wells seems to be the optimal. But every way, every way helps us. So I think we all know that we have limited surface water in town. That makes it susceptible to droughts. Unfortunately, we've seen so many droughts. I moved in here in two thousand eighteen. There's been a drought every even year since then. But we were told that two thousand sixteen it was even worse. That we're about three days from running out of water in town. So it is a big issue for Sichuan. And we know during summertime, increased population, people wanna clean everything, water the grass, all that. There's a big demand on the system. And because we also share some aquifers with other towns, pressure in the wells can go down. Now, EPW's done a good job, I, I feel, running test wells around the town, probably ten or so of the last few years. But unfortunately, they haven't found any sizable amount of water. So we're very anxious or interested, I should say, in finding new water sources. And lo and behold, about three years ago, some guy named Bob showed up at the Water Resources Commission meeting and had some interested residents as well that wanna talk about desalination. Uh, the, the genesis of the subcommittee was sort of, I was maybe one of the few people or many, I don't know, that when we started working on the water treatment plan, saying, why wouldn't we be using this opportunity to figure out how we may be able to use the ocean water, river water, reclaimed water as all part of this because the water treatment plant that we're building is taking care of the water we do have. A lot of the problem we have is with the water that we don't have. As I look back on that now, that wouldn't improve. We didn't really understand the goal. We, we really weren't using the word augment. So I think the fact that, and we were a little bit under the gun with building a new treatment plant, I think not doing it at that time was the right decision. And we've since learned that there are technologies, variable technologies, affordable technologies that can get us where we think we need, where we need to be. So I'll, I'll raise to this slide, a couple of major desalination related technologies, reverse osmosis and ion polarity. And they're both membrane based. RO, reverse osmosis, have a membrane. Heavy duty pressure shoves water through that to clean the water. Ion polarity needs less energy. And you've got membranes, the water passes between membranes and the electrical charges percolates out the, the bad stuff, if you will, of me. One important thing that this, these both, the technology does is it PFAS out of water. And over time, a lot of more, it does, does. And they both do a good job of doing that. The reverse osmosis has been used all over the country for desalination water, but also more recently for cleaning reclaimed water. Reclaimed water is water coming around the sewer treatment plants. Couple of really big installations, biggest ones in the country, Orange County, California, Paso, Texas. They've been doing this for, for decades. They've been recharging their aquifers for decades using reclaimed water. But about eighteen or so years ago, they both built RO plants. They hit the water with UV rays as well to clean it, do some other steps. They clean the water so it's drinkable, meets all drinking water standards for federal and state. Probably tougher in California and Texas, but meets both. And then they pump it into their aquifers, so it's going to get drawn out. And then they pump it into their aquifers, so it's going to get drawn out, water through the plant. But El Paso is taking the next step. Uh, their new desert course, two thousand nineteen, they, they had such good progress and reaction by the public that in two thousand nineteen, the city voted to build a, a larger plant and, and take the reclaimed water, clean reclaimed water, and then pump it directly into their water system. That plant's under construction and should be available in twenty eight.
If, if I could, go ahead, Nigo. Well, I was just, I have a question. I'm not an expert in this, but what you're just saying about taking clean water and then putting it into the aquifer and goes into the treatment plant, sounds like cleaning same water twice. Yes. Cleaning twice. Yes. So, you're saying the new, the new plant that they're building out in El Paso is trying to avoid a second phase stop? And take clean water and then they don't see a problem that's clean enough.
Right.
Passing on standing.
So, I guess.
Let's try to make sure I understood that problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, if you have anything else to mention, Paul.
Yeah. I'm.
About the reclaimed water, I.
And I've actually reached out and, uh, haven't heard back yet, uh, from El Paso, just to see what some of the communication with the public ground. Just wanna make sure I was there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Oh, it's your question.
If I could just touch on Plymouth and Yarmouth.
Go ahead.
They're obviously close to the town. Nineteen ninety-five in Yarmouth, there was a golf course called Bayberry Hills that added like seven new holes. And they irrigated those, uh, new holes strictly with reclaimed water. Um, they got funding from the state revolving fund. They were the first golf course in Massachusetts to ever use reclaimed water to irrigate. They used about eighteen million gallons a year to irritate, irrigate, of course. Plymouth, interestingly enough, I think they have license to take their treated water, their wastewater treatment water. They put two and a half million gallons into Plymouth Harbor. They only put in one point seven. The, the difference of the eight hundred thousand, they're putting into sand infiltration to go into their aquifer, which will then go into their wells and be treated for drinking water. They're now reversing the numbers. They're gonna put eight hundred thousand into the harbor and use one point seven million into, ultimately into the aquifer that they shared with Car. That's, that's going on right now, on the last presentation I saw around, it was like November of the next year. So, this is something very close to home, that's doing very much what we're talking about. And I think everybody around the world, I don't mean overseas in the country, but it used to be isolated, you hear Israel is doing, you know, uh, water desalination in the Rupa. Now, it's the coast of Italy, the coast of Spain, the United Kingdom, and obviously all of the US, so everybody recognizes me.
Ask us a second follow-up question. When you talk about putting it back in the aquifers, again, I'm being an expert. When water goes back to the aquifers, does that help to recharge the pressure levels that the pumps need to be able to pull water out when we're short on water?
Yeah.
The higher the level in the aquifer, the better the pressure.
Put more water down there, there's more water up back.
Right, right, yeah.
The more water there is, the more efficient pumps are down this channel without a luscitation.
Um, interestingly, we have a, an RO plant in Central, Adley, uh, country club. Uh, Rick Stone is on Bob's team here and who has expertise in water projects, both domestically and internationally. Uh, oversaw the development of an RO plant for that Gulf club, that country club, I should say. They had saltwater infiltration into their wells, which impacted the fairways and greens. Um, and it was nice enough to give us a walk through, Jim was, uh, participated in that as well. Really interesting to see, nice compact, uh, plant they built on site. Couple interesting facts, um, one, reverse osmosis. The cost of building or putting together the hardware to clean what could be about three hundred thousand gallons a day, if they ran it longer than they currently do, only costs about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a couple of years ago. So, the cost wasn't nearly as much as I had expected going into it. Now, the implementation was substantially more, moving water all across their golf courses and so forth, um. But, and it was millions of dollars, but so it really speaks to the fact that we need an expert to help us then through this, because it seems like three hundred dozen gallons a day would be substantial for us. That's as big as our biggest well now. So, um, uh, we just need some help in understanding with the ultimate cost of something like that, again, that's desalination water. We also have the opportunity to, to deal with reclaimed water, water coming out of our sewer treatment plant. Couple of interesting facts. The water coming out of our plant is cleaner than the water in North River that it goes into, it translates. We get our water with UV rays on the way out, we're one of the few creative plants in state who does that. It's real advantage for us. Um, and we're limited in the amount of water that we can pump into the North River. There is a, a number, one point two five million gallons a day if we try and stay at or below. That's eighty percent of our max threshold. Reason that's important according to Will, the plant, is you go above that, you get a lot more scrutiny from the, from the state. Lot more regulation, lot more reports to, to file and so forth, and if you ever go over the hundred percent level, the fines are quick and severe. So, uh, that's an issue, but if we divert water, so if we take water away, um, and let's say if we wanna recharge an aquifer, let's say we take a hundred thousand gallons a day out of our sewer treatment plant and recharge an aquifer, a number of aquifers. That gives us an extra hundred thousand capacity in the sewer treatment plant. The sewer treatment plant can process a lot more than it's currently doing. Uh, so that's an important potential asset for that particular situation. Now, Will tells us, he's a little concerned because PFAS are in sewer water, right? They come into the sewer plant, they go out, there's no cleaning inside. He does feel at some point, as the EP will require sewer plants to clean PFAS out. Uh, but, as I mentioned before, the technologies we're talking about, reverse osmosis and the ionization, um, do take out PFAS. Um, so. Uh, the next slide, I think the key point is that, um, and Jim has been great counsel on the, the challenges of whatever you do, permitting, obviously, using water for non-portable, um, use is a lot easier to get permitted for than if you start to use water for, for drinking water. But I think having built the new water treatment plant is gonna help us greatly as we start to move forward for permitting. It, it's also, as I hear from people within the executive, uh, management group of, of the state, the permitting process is starting to get relooked, and, and the comment made was, well, a lot of the old guard is leaving. So, I, I think they understand whether it's DEP or EPA, the importance of looking back and seeing how many of these regulations were established how many years ago, and they really, are they really meeting the needs of, of the communities today where we're in danger of water? Um, on the last slide, I think we obviously feel we have great opportunity, um, your support tonight, the advisory on Thursday, and ultimately to the citizens on, uh, November the third, I think it is, three things will start to happen. Um, we're gonna start to move forward, um, with something that could have significant long-term benefit to the town. We have all heard that the federal level, the state level, and the local level, infrastructure projects take place, and people are saying, this should have been done twenty years ago. This should have been done thirty years ago. Uh, I don't know that we have the luxury of time and water supply, uh, to say, let's just, let's just ignore this one and, and hope that it rains or hope that it snows. It would be who of us to start to take some sort of action, to understand what we can do and how we can get there in terms of addressing this issue? The other thing that happens is we start to know what should, we have advantages and we have some unique situations that we could put together a plan that's unique to us and serves our needs, and hopefully what comes out of that is a plan that's efficient, uh, it's well managed, it's cost effective, um, and it serves the needs that we have, um, in terms of increasing our, our water supply. Um, I think the town has done a terrific job, given, um, the arrows that they've had in it quiver in terms of regulating us through these serious droughts. Um, I think your support tonight starts to move us away from regulation and more towards finding a solution to this, to this, uh, to this issue for us. Um, I'd like to thank you, before I open to questions, I would like to thank the water department, um, Will Brant at the sewer, he's been great, Austin at the golf club. And Jim and Kevin have given us access, they've given us time, whenever we needed data or information, everybody's been great and forthcoming. And that's very important when you're trying to dig for things and, and try to find a new reason for being, so I thank you for that, your support. Questions or comments?
Yeah, well, we're up, um. I just want to, again, it's been years in the making, so thank you for, for your view. It's amazing to see how far we've come, well, we're up to here and there, I would share.
Yes.
I just want to comment, I think this is very nice, proactive. You've shown some great realities already at us, that you've got some examples that are driving through thoughts to go forward. I think we've gotta do this. You need to find alternate sources to support the future. And anything we can do to become more sustainable, I think is very helpful, Jack, so definitely we should do this, definitely.
Um, I agree with the sustainability aspect of this, uh, I think probably most of the board agrees with that concept. I, I think that there's no reason not to go forward with this. This is a fact-finding mission at this stage and, and feasibility concept, and so we have to, we have to take the time to do it. I, I encourage us all to, to be supportive of us so that we can help guys at any point possible, so we can get there. Not necessarily fastest, but, but smartest. Uh, I had, I guess, one or two questions that, that you may not be able to answer, it's a feasibility concept, but, um, it certainly sounds like it falls under the common sense category. Um, there's an ocean there, and it's made of water. But I, I think that, I'm very curious to see what we learn as we go through this process. Um, the, the logic-based question I would have would be, let's say we find, uh, a, either one of these types of plants, of the technology, and let's say the cost-benefit equation seems to match up. Is there a reason why you're, you're rotating three hundred thousand at about twenty percent of our current capacity, uh, and then we will invent the, the plant to be dropped by the golf course? Is there a reason why, I don't know how large these plants physically look or how much power they take, but assuming the cost-benefit equation works, that you can't have more than one of these plants in the town, and, and if you can, do we have one that's on the amount of seawater we're allowed until they can take out of the ocean, et cetera? I mean, these questions are.
So, I asked, yeah, I don't know the answer to the last one, um. Uh, I think, and so tell you that the cost of this water is probably gonna be more than the cost from other water sources. So, there is that, um, issue that we need to work through, and that's why we need consultants to help us, but, um, really, no, there's not, I mean, if it makes financial sense and the town agrees, then you could do something, uh, reclaim the water and something with the desalination, again, if it makes financial sense, we just, we just don't know at this point. And that's why we want to consult to look at both opportunities.
If, if it, if it helped, if this perspective helps, the, the facility at Adley, I think Jim was at like sixty by one twenty?
Yeah, it's a small facility, but they're not taking direct sea water, they're taking brackish water.
Right, right.
So, it's a lot lower level, and they're not putting it into the water supply. So, it's the whole, you're talking a whole different animal, things like that.
But the, the, as, as Bruce said, it was three hundred thousand, and, and the cost just grows as you continue to add cylinders, if you, if you will, too, right? But it was, it's a relatively compact, uh.
I know, I know a lot of these questions are questions that we're working against.
Yes.
It's, it's very interesting to me, and for this course, and this time effort, and these words, just to figure out the answers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, you've worked so hard on this for so long. You have been persevering, I can't believe you're still at it. I might think that it's absolutely time to move forward in the next step of the, um, the exploration of the reality of the.
Right, I think, so your point, maybe a consultant could come back and say, hey, the desalination doesn't make sense. Or the reclaim does make sense, or maybe just this one does, or that.
We have no idea.
Right.
We really don't. Or, hey, let's, what are you doing, this is not the right. Who knows?
But, I mean.
Like, like, better like you think it's smarter.
Yeah, no, no offense, but yeah, the people who's doing this, we're never gonna, we're gonna get real answers, we're up there. Yeah.
I think that's gonna be, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good, good.
Alright, recommendations for special town meeting, I don't know what it is. Alright. Um. So, I guess we could go, we'll do this one by one, or is there any, does anyone wanna work anything out that they're concerned?
Of course. Just, uh, phone out the board on Article eleven, we have legislation pending, Mike, out for additional liquor licenses. So, that's in committee, I reached out to the rest of the scheme of pay, she's on a community, uh, licensure, wherever it is. Find out where that is, but uh, too much of the legislative display, we get a lot confused, and maybe we wanna take this, put it up the annual that before we have pending right now, get those, uh, things back, see you again.
So, there was four pending, now you want another one?
We were asking for seven before, uh, the governor would only ask for four. We didn't have a town meeting, we asked the governor to file it. It should be used with the four, so we think we're still gonna need more, we're in North City, we're still, I think we have time right now, we'll have legislation pending, it'd be one for Flack Bar, one for Salt Mosh, and then two additional that would have to be one of our in the harbor district, along with two in BBA district.
I think your, your advice would be, I think, we can push these to the other meeting.
Like, like they're the ones we have now, looking at moving.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if, if the ones we have, I think at the moment, on those issues, we're probably technically have two empty spots.
Two additional all alcohol licenses, that's what I think is out, we are out of all alcohol licenses right now. Uh, Salt Mosh is offering, you know, a seasonal all alcohol. And then when this passes, we'll be able to keep going, otherwise for two months, we'll be on bare wine. Because we didn't have a beer of wine.
I like, I like your advice.
So, the one that was, uh, Rivashet, that moved, that was Karatong, when she took that down to the, right, so we didn't have any. We weren't aware we didn't have it until the guy from Salt Mosh convinced us.
So, what's the flipper I'm doing right now? They're, they're all alcohol, right?
It's season, it's season. I'm watching. And so, I, he is making plans for Sarge.
Yeah.
And that will be, he's making plans to make use for the restaurant, so without a license in hand, they won't make those plans.
Right. Okay, do you wanna take that off?
Yeah, I would take that off right now.
But I will never do it in.
Put on the spring if we don't.
Right.
So, I will settle.
That's right, can we, they asked the board, already voted, put it on, it's the main, has the board taken a motion to get it off?
Alright.
Motion to remove Article eleven of the special town meeting.
You've got a second. No more seconds. Uh, yeah. Yes, at this time. Uh, all favor, sorry.
I, I.
Yes. Alright. So, other than that, I'll just go through both the unpaid bills, budget reconciliations, capital improvement, which we just, uh, transfer to reserves, community preservation, those articles, we talked about maintenance for infection of open spaces.
That's what we're talking about.
We just talked about, uh, the, uh, just the long title.
Right.
Maintaining trust. Uh, the desal, which is really reclaimed water, uh, revolving fund limits. Anyone need to refresh on any, of any of these? You know, going through, I'm sure.
Do you think we can change the desalination to reclaimed water? Like, so it's.
It's been used.
Open.
To a different, to a different.
Desal and replants?
I think desal and replant.
Says desal, the basic technology, or reclaimed water, yeah, what it can.
Plus, it's reclaimed water, okay.
In the actual thing, not in.
Yeah.
Is it the language?
Perfect. That's a good point, I think. Makes.
That's a lot for both.
Alright, tax title, annual control, got it? Kill on the liquor license and the digital notices. Uh, we got it, okay. I'm sure of this point.
Yep.
So, see no objections? Any objections? Mr. Clerk?
They've moved to recommend Articles one through eleven of the eleven three twenty-five special town meeting warrant. It authorized the town administrator to add any additional unpaid bills presented prior posting of the warrants.
Okay.
Well, move by Mr. Gilmore.
Second.
Second, uh, I'm Schleidel, all favor. Allow me to introduce you to this. Right. Consent agenda. Here I go.
Basically, by any angle from here, it would be everything except for community preservation and the desalination technology setting, so that would be something.
Yeah, it's just a table, yeah. If you see the acquisition, it's just a desal.
CPC and desal.
No, we took off the liquor, so that's not.
And I think, I said, when we read this in, uh, meeting, any.
Anyone could say, or hold.
That's our best guess.
All right.
I think it's a good guess.
Move to accept the, uh, the consent agreement as presented.
Aye. You motion, you're also getting a balance label, all favor, town meeting, all right.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I need a sign.
Sign articles.
Okay, one thirty-four.
One thirty-four?
One thirty-four.
All right. One, two, three.
She can, if you need a, just gave a possible.
There it is.
Yeah, same word, yeah.
All right, um.
How good the additional liquor license?
Well, for.
You're once, you're once you see, right? Are you the CP, you're doing by ladies honor?
Yeah, are you CP, you're CPC, right?
I'm CPC, no, I'm not CPC. Yes, I am.
So you're doing CPC?
Yeah.
I'm a CPC. I can get, I mean, I'll do the first four, no one's gonna do those. Capital for a bit.
I can do the maintenance improvement, that's if we go by the.
Okay, we're gonna do.
I'll do the water.
We'll do the reuse.
Yeah, I said the water.
The water, yeah. And then, Nika, you got everything else?
Nine, ten?
You do that, you get nine, ten, eleven, which is the official free.
Do the last four.
Yeah, one, two, yeah.
Eight, nine, ten.
Well, eleven.
Eight, nine, ten, twelve, just that one.
Yeah, eight, nine, ten, twelve. I mean.
I would say we got your last number, Tim.
I don't know if anyone's gonna call.
Never know.
Never know.
Probably not, it's gonna go up.
So that's the amount of time we spend on animal control by law?
No.
Um, to be clear, you give us everything we have to say, we have to say it, and we have to, right?
No, you have to like.
Definitely.
Let me know, you know, we have the, we have the proper, yes.
You'll have, you'll have to read them all, you'll have to read them all.
We're supposed to like to say.
Yeah, proper, yeah.
Making much more.
All right, Jim, let's talk capital.
Let's talk capital.
Name my week, whether.
The sidewalk.
Let's talk capital. Laura had this kind of, by the way.
Alcohol, very quickly, and we'll be spending, we'll put in an amount of time on.
We all reviewed, but you didn't remember, I read what you already wrote, I thought it was very comprehensive.
Books at home, you also have access to the software.
I know, it's a lot.
Software's pretty good.
Works.
I think, like.
Comments have uploaded the codes they have, they have little pictures of the existing machine, so that's pretty good. Else, I'll just hit the highlight, this is a very robust capital plan for this seven. Uh, it's our fourth year using the new software. We like it, I think the capital budget community likes it. Saves us a ton of paper, so that's pretty good. Uh, five year capital plan is a hundred forty-six million dollars, twenty-one point seven this year. I'm recommending sixteen point six, two biggest ones of those, excuse me, is almost six million dollars for refurbishments at the store. Treatment plant, about two and a half million dollars for, uh, basically a marginal shooting range for the police department, everybody got places to shoot.
That's two point two.
About two point four, eight-ish, yeah. They'll be on site at the, be on site at the public station, yeah. Uh, next one, Seth. These are just really nice graphs that Nancy likes to do, the children with the money, come and come.
Very art, artfully done.
Uh, you keep going, Seth.
With Nancy.
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 So I almost spent a lot of time, general funds, Seth, next one, please.
Nancy.
Nancy's about it.
Nancy. It's been a long week. It's Tuesday. So general fund, um, yeah, we funded most of those requests in the general fund, we did have, uh, the, the cash to share to do it. Roadway maintenance, uh, modifications to the WPA's veteran center, I think it's one of the sports priorities.
Yes.
Uh, but I think a big one that we did, uh, it's up, next, uh, this is like, this is the best. We wait for services, I love this. The veteran center, the sidewalks. This is, I love this, it's amazing. We put in money this year dedicating just sidewalks, we have money in our chapter ninety, uh, tile money that we generally use for repair of sidewalks because sidewalks are so expensive. Uh, consulting on what stock we want, we get a lot of calls from people, so I did put four hundred thousand dollars in capital plan for sidewalks. Next sidewalk on your plan is Stockbridge Road.
Good.
We are applying for, uh, I think streets grant, we have it. So we get the complete streets grant, we're live, we have to, then the rest go to our next priority, which we can discuss. Otherwise, this money, we're going to do the Stockbridge Road from basically the top of the hill at the train station all the way to the, uh, second schools road, little pack that went away.
Good.
Fortional protection, uh, flood mitigation, I would look at, we put those in, a couple other things, uh, the flood mitigation, help that, roadway improvements, chapter ninety. Running on the waterways, yes. Waterways, uh, top care rehabilitation, which is to get someone to come in with the top gear, so we kind of work these, we got on that. And a mowing field regrid design. They had also asked for, uh, a marginal bathroom, a marginal shower. One, they didn't have the funds to do that out of their retained earnings. Two, I think with everything going on, that's probably gave a little more conversation as to what, where, how, when, uh, will be connected to so where we go. So I do not recommend those at this point.
That's a good question about the mowing field regrid.
Yep.
So that's going to regrid what we currently have in the mowing fields.
Right.
But it's not going to touch any concepts of dredging concepts over the front of this water.
No. Uh, the dredging, I actually, actually, I'd say a bunch of dredging is more around the piers as opposed to the mowing.
Well, we'll get additional.
Uh, you probably get additional, which is what they, what they much more efficient in terms of size of both, where they go.
Right, because of both the size have been, so there's, so there's more available out there.
We'll be good.
Uh, water enterprise, uh, I think really a couple of big ones, uh, water source improvement, well seventeen A, that's basically building to do well. Seventeen A is the current wells, getting to have resuscitation life, we're not getting the trial of D two. Uh, designing a new water, raw water intake at the reservoir. This would do in across the street from the current treatment plant, it will take longer to curb, as it will to build a new treatment plant. That intake, it'd give us one begun and two without the current intake, it'll have a new one. Also drawn from that source will give us better quality water, because the reservoir is deeper, cold, but it doesn't go in the vast. Be a little, but that'll take a long while to go. Uh, I did not recommend three point six million dollars for water main replacement. One, I don't think the rates would take it at this point. Two, I don't think the department has the bandwidth to do another project, they have, as Nick's pointed out, seven million dollars right now. I can place with money, those projects need to get down, the water treatment plant need to get down. If we get to the summer, making great progress, we could pick this up again next fall, but right now I did not recommend that. Soil enterprise, two big things on soil enterprise, one is the headworks. We haven't waited for the facility study on the soil plant, the preliminary study, this is the most important thing we need to be done, it's a study. Do all kinds of things. That could, with, with the scale that we're doing, uh, coming to will, will save about four million gallons of water usage year than we use right now. And also use effluent, replace it that water, I think about another ten to eleven thousand gallons of effluent out of the effluent stream every year, which allows us to go one to a.
Well, I was, I was, I was, this sewer plant on the back end of the water use, water, it's really nasty.
Right now, we're using drinking water to plant, stop using that, we use it, they'll use the water from the plant, recirculate.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Uh, you'll see we did not, we did not approve the safety, safety actions that were in there because the safety hazard would be part of this six point, uh, five point nine million dollar.
That's great.
Transport station, no cap for the transport station. Uh, Waterswalk Enterprise, about a hundred seventy thousand dollars in various equipment, always trimming, things like that. That's coming out of the enterprise. So in summary, uh, we try to limit borrowing as much as possible, the only general fund borrowing is the police.
Yes.
Is the police shooting range. Bar in the soil department, we've looked out into the future, since Nancy's looked out in the future. Check out our bar and soil department, so I think if we do that right, we won't be a major hit to the rates when we get to it. Uh, and then we'll apply for as many grants as we can, house protection CPC for a couple of projects that we've approved in the office. It's a long way home. I'll always be coming for you at some point, like, we are off at lunch, but we've got a pretty show, we got a whole bunch of.
Just out of curiosity, they need a new firing range, when was the last time a police officer fired a gun in this town?
Uh, they have to qualify twice a year.
Oh, I'm mysterious when.
In town?
Yeah. So we're just talking about.
Can't play the last time they actually fired their gun. Uh, we did have, right before I got here, we did have the threat of the act of shooting at the high school, which had a pretty big response with a lot of SWAT, things like that. Uh, police have to qualify twice a year, right, must qualify. So right now, we're sending.
Fifth time.
Ten to twelve officers for eight hours a day, twice a year, four days, because you have forty officers. Uh, we can't train at night, which is required, there's a simulation in this. Another thing we're gonna do is we're gonna allow the darkness to use it for us.
And is it gonna be like over in the swamp side of the building or behind the building?
Uh, we are behind the left. So you know, the technology is up back in that left, it's completely self, self-contained. No noise coming from, we had one here before, quarter one, uh, it's, it's pretty.
And so there will be some revenue source for that, from that.
Yeah.
While your other towns getting.
The biggest thing I asked Chief Thompson, but we're spending a lot of time, so we want to qualify, right? Because now, I have five people working, okay, you're going to the range today, you guys go up the street. Next time you're going to range, you guys go around the street, haven't been there. While they're working.
They're running around, makes good sense.
And no travel.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's. It's been a couple of years now, I, I kept pushing back on, but there's really.
We've been talking about that for, I think, like three years.
I thought I had, maybe I was confused, you could say it's, it's a little temporary still?
No, we have a temporary.
Oh, I thought, I thought this was.
We have a temporary one.
Okay.
They could also use, uh, doesn't happen necessarily, use regular mechanisms, they're really, really expensive also. So.
That's simulated. Simulated?
Yeah, it do difference in tactical simulations in the.
Oh, got it.
Uh, and then for Andrew, uh, I do recommend do the poses by the department. We will not train those in, it will be repurposed for the, uh, my, oh, for hockey.
Well, there you go, I love it.
It's a long way to go, a very aggressive plan. The one thing to touch on is we have continued to make, six year in a row, we've completely found necessary, uh, social.
That's great.
It's, I will go through all this.
Again, it's, it's pretty, uh, the stuff in the, uh, play that was pretty good, you know, the question on that, I mean.
Certainly, Clap's the most friends, we're very good friends at the Seaport Economic Advisory Council, they're very much, very helpful.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yes.
All right. Good?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Really good.
Thanks, Seth, I'll give you a hint.
All right, next, the Project School Site Land Reuse Committee. So, um, essentially, we have to confirm the charge as it's written. And so, as of now, let's go through this. Uh, we have.
Nine.
Recreation, formal housing trust member, representative of the food pantry, and six citizens large. Um.
Mr. Chair, we have the, the six citizens that large, a certain amount of number of other, how will that do to group to determine that are immediately uh, neighbors of that population?
What do you think I mean?
I apologize, you got to turn that too.
We wouldn't want someone losing a butter because they just actually have a problem.
Right.
Well, then, just if, I guess, um, we leave all that decision, make it to our best group.
I, I, I agree at least one.
Somebody familiar with that area.
That Cushingville neighborhood, that we're calling, it's like something Cushingville neighborhood, there can't be a direct partner.
Fair enough.
I think somebody that, that lives within the boundaries of the access, two major access points, right? From three A and from, uh, I don't know, away, and from, uh, uh, what's that, it's not, I don't even know. Country way.
So, so in that neighborhood, okay, so one neighborhood representative, so to speak.
Yeah, that's a nice way to say it, neighborhood.
Neighborhood. Representative.
Chris, we have to be sure we can build up paragraphs.
Everything kind of like, I mean.
No, I think it's like a point.
You're three houses away, you're like.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be overly prescriptive, we have to use our best judgment for this, here.
Oh, great.
There were four streets away, three.
Plus I will say, they're vibrant, they're not making.
Somebody that's an access point for other leaders and butters that have questions to process, that have concerns about, and all sorts of things.
Right.
And also gives us an access point in the sense of the property process, because.
I'm not very, sort of, a little bit, yeah.
All right, so yeah, I mean, we're representatives.
They're confides a week, they're advising us, they're not making us.
Correct.
Most likely.
Yeah.
With a butter, that's our name, excuse me.
Yeah, sir. And I guess my other question was, is there a reason that, that somebody from the joint board is not represented on this?
We will have.
They have to report to us anyways.
Yeah, we would have to, we wouldn't be a member. We're, we're never a voting member.
We're right down with the reparations, we would say, no, sorry, or that's the greatest idea.
All right, let's advertise this stuff.
Yeah, I even have, I have a couple of, right.
Stop, I mean, like.
And you have a couple of citizens that have already expressed.
Like we gotta get this moving, we have work plan, yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other additions?
And I believe the charge is fine, too.
Perfect.
To the charge or to the present.
Guard of residence. The only thing I saw missing in the charge itself, and, yeah. You would make the charges, but. I, I, I like the idea of, of what we talked about, to do a consideration, uh, thinking in, some, making eyes best used to include the potential for the, the mass of town residents, by words. And I'll use the, the, the concept that's been floated, it's probably more of a hockey ring as an example, I'm not for, yes, a hockey ring, but a hockey ring, even if it serves everybody that plays hockey in the entire town, it's still serving a small portion of the town.
I mean, you make that argument about the.
You make that argument about the. I'm saying that multi-use space, we're already secure to say multi, multi-use here, possibly.
With all due respect, I think that would be determined after this committee goes forward, I think the charge is broad-based enough that, again, they advise us. So I think your concern is, is that at a management level, when we get down the road and actually have all the options to consider, whether something like a, a skate rink or whatever, it would be appropriate. I, I don't think I need to worry about cutting it up that, that year.
It's just sort of what community needs.
Yeah, I think so.
I like the way it's written, who loves this?
I don't know, but it's really good.
So let me.
Well, thank you.
Really good. The underutilized space next to the Sisseton High School baseball field, that's the, uh, wood, wood splitter to the left of.
Do you think?
I will work out.
That's all.
If you're at, it says, underutilized. If you're at, it says, underutilized space adjacent to the constituent high school baseball field, is that to the left, the woods to the left?
No, this, this was.
Splinterville.
The woods to the left of question.
Not the woods.
So, that's, well, that's a good thing to bring up, we want that part of this, I thought we were to connect.
Yeah.
So, you know, the, the construction is by the high school, by the year. Or by the baseball field, right, in part, you know, that weird.
We call it the roast.
Clive, of course.
Yeah, they're called.
So, the underutilized place adjacent to the high school field is Splinterville.
That's what I remember when we come, yes. Yes.
All right.
Just to talk, because maybe they might, they may or may not have, they may not even consider it, but they may say, well, listen, if you're gonna do football, it's from there. Who knows?
Putting.
It's putting, who knows?
Shipping, putting, or anything.
Well, that's the ball, because I don't know, but since that's kind of.
We're gonna include in the charge.
They could, that's not their main focus, they can just stay with that, or something that'll be great, we have putting. Shouldn't have, should be, shipping, who knows?
But they, when they pass, it's more common they.
Which eventually is gonna have to go away. Right?
But over the forest.
Motion, motion. Motion, no needs for motion.
Yes, advertise. You didn't give a bunch of you previously voted on, you really just advertise.
Let's just go for it and advertise.
Your members needed to be just.
Okay, so you understand, so the one neighbor, we're all in, let's, give us a motion, Jenny, that's added the one neighborhood representative.
Motion to accept or to reaffirm the charge and the background, the, the committee is, the committee assemblage. With the addition of, of qualifying one of the six citizen at large members as being a neighborhood member.
One more second, by, uh, Nico Harrison, or Nico, uh, Ms. Harrison, sorry. Uh, all favor, by. Janice, let's declare surplus. We're, we're. We have a role in this, we're rolling.
You have to pay for this. Yeah, take a work, go to the law, fire, police. Recreation.
All right, so this is.
Do we have a rate at all?
No.
No, we don't.
Do yours items that the town has.
Oh, right.
Oh, you wanna sell.
Yeah, sell it. I moved.
If we need a forest water, we'll go out.
I moved to sell all items.
Move to declare a lot of that.
No, it's all under pay, it's easy to, there should be.
Oh, right here.
Move to declare the attached listing of items of surplus for auction.
Second.
Move by Mr. Delmore, have a second on the left.
Yeah.
We don't wanna sell it, sell, 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 we need money.
Make sure people have.
Oh.
We're voting? Do they hear a vote?
No, I just want, just want to make sure people. I have a new brush beat. Yeah.
I just look through it, I don't have to that.
All right, switch once.
Sell it.
Seconded, all favor, by.
So you can, I need you to go back and just vote your people coming through your application.
Yeah.
All right, quick, your motion will be right after your agenda.
Yeah, at the beginning, I can read that, and I have it on here.
Yeah, the votes for three weeks plus.
Yeah, let me get back to it, it's really bad.
Day three.
Termino.
I think you want to.
Move to appoint Sarah Landon and David Stevens to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or in close accessory name. Further move to appoint Janice Marby to the Sister Cultural Council for a term of three years or until a successor is named. And also move to reappoint John L. Sullivan to the Sister City Ireland Court County Committee for a term of two years or in close accessory name.
Harrison seconded by Nico, all favor, by.
Now we have minutes, don't we? What's the date?
Vote.
Turnback.
Approve minutes from September nine.
Turnback again by Brad, Schlegel, all my favor, by Janice. Any court sources?
Oh, court.
Well, I have a court by.
And the.
Yes.
Chair, we have a letter here, and I'll give it to everybody, and I'll pass it over. Uh, to the, to the constituent E B W and Jim Loupro. Thank you for the beautiful work you did on remating our whole road, this was our hopes and dreams for the kids, throughout, quite safely around our neighborhood, honestly. We didn't think it would happen, it's truly a dream come true, everyone is so appreciative of the work and for recognizing our neighborhood for this need, thank you very much, we appreciate your hard work. Here to our streets, sincerely, Lindsay McClain at twelve hundred length, there's some great pictures of the kids, and, uh, it looks like the kids put out a nice. Refreshant, bad water stand with E B W, so please take a look, hey, nicely got a letter like this.
Lindsay, you're the best. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I get her mail sometimes.
She sent us a letter, the condition, Kevin and I would have to look that in. That kind of, when I talk about paying this, you know, I kind of refocus differently, so we did a couple of these neighborhoods with, they're basically just top coats. Because I don't think they use, they don't need our plate, we do, as opposed to what we've been doing, taking the big street, we're doing it, so. Uh, she kind of gave us the impetus for it, and she came out really nice.
It's great.
Great, you're gonna do my street next.
On the list.
On the list. I love it. Any, um, liaisons?
Sure, we'll start over here. Uh, a couple of things, uh, most immediately fresh in my mind was the Saturday night, Irish Sister City, halfway to St. Alfred's, St. Flumbrager. Uh, it was so well-attended, they raised about a thousand dollars. Uh, I will make some comment, that we probably there from the school committee, and it's interesting that. We're sending twenty-six to twenty-five kids every two years, and I was just surprised to see there was no school support there. Uh, so I hope we can encourage that the next time, because it's very important for. The whole purpose of the Sister City Committee is the exchange program between Westport and the great town of Sittuate, and that's the school. Now, the school does a lot when the kids are here from Ireland, there's no doubt about that, but. The help with the fundraising, to get the parents involved, would be really good. The fundraising, the money they're raising goes to scholarships, to help pay for kids that maybe the parents can't pay all the way. To fly them to Ireland and all of that, so that's the purpose of the money, uh, it's for no more than that, it's not, I don't do the heritage trail and all that different group. Uh, so, it was really good, it was nice to see. Uh, then, Mr. Chair, I also was at the Sittuate Housing Authority meeting last week. And, uh, again, this is Deb Schwartz's second meeting, very comprehensive, very pulled together, focusing on safety, focusing on. Some of the, uh, exterior renovations coming up. Uh, she's really getting her teeth into things, she's got a great committee, they're in good support. There was the suggestion that I need to get them together with the Affordable Housing Trust, and then at the Affordable Housing Trust. Meeting, I did mention that Steve Irish or his group, and so they're gonna get together and talk to learn some best practices. Uh, and you know, Affordable Housing Trust, but. Trust for seven before us with the Affordable Housing, with the state housing plan, which we have to sign off on in by December, so that's all my liaison stuff. Or not. I have rec, rec tomorrow night, and historical, historical on Thursday, you know.
Isn't that historical?
Good, because I can't make it.
I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I might have had it last year, so I refuse myself.
I'm gonna be going all their meetings.
And then you try to bring everybody to play on the mental health thing.
Oh, yeah, so, um, we, uh, to, well, let's do Susan.
Oh, I just had a quick one, because mine, mine is, I thought more guide and also, um. Conservation, I did wanna say, um, should be on the next agenda, um, is the waterways, the, um, waterways did vote. Uh, how to master building and renovation, so we have that in our packet, and, um, we did pay for that study and should have that presented at the next meeting. Um, that we have, um, and they're also working on, um, a five-year plan for. Um, rates, which should also be on our next to the meeting or the next meeting, so those are two things, though. And that's all, right now, that I.
You didn't move it.
Yes.
Look at that, 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 all we have.
And they were all here tonight, right, for minor.
Um, we had like sort of a informal meeting, um, with some interested people the other day at the library about the mental health. And, um, and Ray Galvin was the speaker to sort of, um, you know, updating us with what has been done, um. Apparently, our suicide rate in Sittuate is a lot higher than, um, it's indirect to the state, uh, but we're trying to get actual better. Data, which is obviously hard to compile, because people don't necessarily die in our town, um, everything's protected by HIPAA, so you have to sort of go around in circles. Um, we do have a lot of really great nonprofits, we do have a lot of, um, really great, um, resources for people, and they know how to find them, but, um. We definitely think that there is a need, you know, a need to explore where there are holes and where we can, um, right.
Of course.
And I, I was just thinking of the planning board, but I missed the beginning part with, uh, Affordable Housing.
They, they weren't here. Where, the Affordable Housing Trust, the, with the, um, housing system plan?
Yeah.
They, the.
They approved, and they're gonna bring it to us for our.
Okay, right.
So you'll see, and it's very, uh, just to get you an idea of that, it really, it analyzes the town, where it's at today. Our beacon value, the, the age groups of who's growing, who's shrinking, where should we be looking? What are some of the steps we need to continue to support, uh, affordable housing, but et cetera, so I think you'll find it to be very comprehensive. It's done professionally, uh, the woman that I saw that was, the consultant was extremely detailed, and I think you'll be duly impressed. And probably won't have a problem signing it off.
So one thing I did hear was that they, that the North River Road is not held in perpetuity for Affordable Housing, that could go off then.
That would not be related to the actual plan, that's the Affordable Housing Trust, and that, that, that's a specific issue to deal with the owner of that property. Yeah, that would not be the big plan, that, that's certainly something we should be concerned with, yes. Definitely, because we don't wanna lose those, uh, humans, basically.
And then I can, I don't know, I don't know what happened, they, they had four double weeks.
Um, by the way, committee man to continue, we finished most of the out-of-control bylaws, are working our way through the end of that, hopefully next meeting. Um, the bike committees continue to push hard on the state of the school plan, and on that note, uh, we've been with, uh. The highway department and police department have seemed to have located the beacon that we had ordered, paid for, and purchased, but it was not. Installed yet, because we seem to displace it for a while, seems to found it's getting put in places soon as possible. So, uh, it's a, basically a crossing guard beacon that goes to, we down at the intersection or crosswalk. And the.
Who?
Crosswalk between Gilson and, uh, the Jenkins on, uh, on Kent Street. And will help to make it, because it's, it's, uh, there's parts and buttons down the street, there's a lot of kids crossing. And now, the big effort that we make, uh, for bikers' school, that's a big crossing point for bikers from, uh, third class and other places. So, uh, we'll make sure the kids are sitting.
Things that have flash, have flash, can?
It'll essentially be one of those. Stuck posts that's sitting there with, with, uh, light on it. Uh.
Tell people that they're coming across, bikers gonna cross, so we're not gonna make a lasting.
Uh, so we have, we have one there, uh, also very close, I believe, to bringing the bike repair standards in in our Sittuate and, uh, that town. And, um, talking with, uh, Nick and Anna Drack about maybe putting a third one in some planes, sure not gonna get those then. Down in gates, we have a ton of bikers that are going to gates on the other end as soon as possible, so. Sidewalk, uh, subcommittee has met, uh, lead time in the last three weeks, that should kickstart that process, and is doing well to minimize and. Clean up the lists for preparation to the E D C M board, to, I had talked about the big plan for the next sidewalks, after we've talked about stop bridge, as well as the new. Possible widehead, we plan on who repairs, thank you, Jim, because we can, if you use the highway department, so we're in the midst of defining. Order of repair and what the construction are, so that we can help residents, I advise those, we're gonna be holding an open public meeting. Early November, uh, try and nail down that list, and upload to, especially, um, and. That's all I have right now.
Yeah.
And don't forget the Fisherman's Best this Sunday, and, um, Fall of Sittuate is the following Sunday.
And the Dog Park, isn't it?
Dog Park.
Small dog park opening on the Saturday.
Oh, he's better, right? The San, the San.
Why is it?
It was October.
No, no, it's September, it's this Saturday.
Why is it?
Little Dog Park, Little Dog, this Saturday.
Little Dog Park.
Little Dog Park.
This Saturday.
This Saturday.
I will be remiss, not to get by one, the school committee, uh. To welcome our interim superintendent, uh. Tom Rapp, just taking over from. Uh, so, Tom, you know very well, uh, well, one to the, uh, the role in the.
He'll be great.
Wonderful, all right. That, uh, motion, uh, motion to.
So move.
Start. Except the, uh, notes from last time, or now?
We did, we did that.
We did, we did that.
I'm gonna guess, you want to, uh, adjourn inside documents, move by Mr. Gilmore, second by Nico, all the favor, by.